So, good evening all, welcome to our April 24th Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk is going to open the meeting, yes? Thank you.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kragoviek?
Present.
Council President McCartney.
Present. Do have text messages. Victor Cirillo, my colleague, is on his way up from Washington DC.
Michelle Castlin is coming from a meeting.
Coming from a meeting, so we can still get started. The first thing on our agenda is recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. My council colleague Joe Kragoviek has a recognition citation for you.
Yes, just a very brief history lesson. The Fair Housing Act was part of the 1968 Civil Rights Act. That was one of the most important pieces of legislation to pass in our lifetime. And this is now the 50th anniversary of that act which prohibited discrimination in any form of housing. And it made a big change, and still is making changes today, in our society and in our economy. And so, I just thought it might be good to have some folks from the Realtors who have actually been focusing on celebrating this come here before us and speak. Just very briefly, I'll just read the citation. "The 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. Whereas on April 11th, 1968, seven days after the assassination of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., President Lyndon Johnson signed into law Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Fair Housing Act. And whereas the legislation was cosponsored by then Senators Edward Brooke and Walter Mondale, and advanced an ambitious and progressive vision to eliminate housing discrimination and residential segregation in this country. And whereas, as envisioned, the Fair Housing Act is an important tool for achieving both justice and equity, and in signing the bill, President Johnson proclaimed, quote, 'At long last, fair housing for all is now a part of the American way of life. We've come some of the way, not near all of it,' end quote. And whereas, fair housing helps to strengthen families, communities, businesses, and our overall economy, and ensures that every community can be a place of opportunity where people can live in diverse, inclusive, accessible neighborhoods with quality schools, healthy foods, meaningful jobs, healthcare, green spaces, quality credit, and the other opportunities that frame and affect our lives. And whereas, the year 2018 marks the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, as well as the 30th anniversary of the creation of the National Fair Housing Alliance, a consortium of more than 220 organizations, that is the only national group solely dedicated to preventing discrimination in housing. And whereas the National Association of Realtors, its members, and its Equal Opportunity and Cultural Diversity Committee have contributed significantly to the realization of the goals of the Fair Housing Act. Now therefore, the Township Council of the Township of West Orange, New Jersey, does hereby commend and support the past and future achievements of the Fair Housing Act, recognizing its importance, its positive impact on our community, and the responsibility of all citizens to promote its provisions and goals." So we have three speakers here, and what I'm going to do is I'm just going to introduce them now, and then have them come up, one, two, three, and then after they speak, we'll probably take a picture. The first speaker will be Jason Mies. He's the manager of the Wykert Realtors West Orange office. He's been there since, he's been at that position since February. He's been a Realtor four years, and he lives in town on, can I say the address? Dogwood Road. Next up speaking will be Deborah Regan. She is, she has a son studying at Seton Hall Prep. She's a member of the Morristown Shade Tree Commission. As a Realtor, she is also a member of the New Jersey Realtors Equal Opportunity Cultural Diversity Committee. She's a Realtor working out of the Wykert Realtors, I knew I'd stumble over that, corporate headquarters, residential sales office in Morris Plains. And the third speaker is James Hughes. Mr. Hughes is a Realtor working out of the Keller Williams Realty office in Montclair. He has spoken before the New Jersey League of Municipalities. He is the 2018 Chairman of the New Jersey Realtors Equal Opportunity Cultural Diversity Committee. Mr. Mies, without further ado, please.
Well, I really just wanted to first say thank you guys for having us. I'm incredibly proud to be a resident of West Orange. It's an incredible town filled with incredible people, and it makes my job running the largest real estate office in town incredibly easy and a pleasure. You know, we have a unique kind of situation going on right now. Thirty-six percent of home buyers right now are millennials in West Orange. I'd say well over that, maybe 50, 60 percent. And today, we have buyers not running from diversity but seeking it. And often, you know, criteria, three bedrooms, two bath, a big backyard, and diversity is something we hear now. So we're in a unique position where we are kind of on the other side of this tunnel. And in a town like West Orange, it's incredibly easy to do business in a diverse town with diverse clients asking for diversity. So it's really a pleasure to see where things have gone and to be part of a town that accepts everyone, and the real estate market is responding positively to those things. So, again, just thank you for letting us be here today and honoring a town and a landmark in such a fashion. Thanks.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
Please.
Good evening, everyone. Quite a powerful statement that was, the 50th anniversary of fair housing. This is what basically emboldened us to be here this evening with you all. As part of the Equal Opportunity and Cultural Diversity Committee, we were talking at our meetings in Trenton a couple months ago, and we were talking about how important this act is, as we were, you know, coming up with our mission statements and so on and so forth. And we took it upon ourselves to really go about and making sure that we get the word out and commemorate this very important act. I mean, just powerful words, that on April 11th, 1968, seven days after the assassination of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, this particular act came into law. This is very powerful, this is too important. We really need to celebrate, commemorate, and really spread the word and let our communities know. I'm not going to be here too long because I know that these council meetings could run long. I'm from Morristown, trust me, I know. But I'd really like to take this opportunity to really thank, you know, the Council of West Orange for allowing us, you know, to have this incredible opportunity to share this and commemorate this with you today. I also love West Orange. I drive to West Orange from Morristown every single day. I didn't mean to really underline that, but I drive to West Orange every single day because my son goes to Seton Hall Prep. He had his choices, but we felt that Seton Hall Prep was the best place for him. We love the school, we love the diversity of the school, so, again, thank you, West Orange, for being the town that you are and giving us this opportunity.
Thank you.
Jason?
So, first and foremost, I want to thank Councilman Joe Kragoviek for his leadership and getting this citation to acknowledge what's, fair housing is near and dear to me. Some years ago, my children, who are now 23 and 21, were, we were living in Jersey City, and we wanted to move to a town where there was economic, religious, and ethnic diversity. And we ended up in West Orange. My children went to, from first grade at the Hazel School to Edison Middle School, then to Roosevelt, they finished their middle school, and then eventually they went somewhere else for high school. However, we sought this town out because of its cultural diversity and what it offers to, you know, people that want to experience that. Having grown up in New York City where it was a melting pot, we wanted to replicate a suburban version of that, and we were able to do that here. As chairperson for Equal Opportunity and Cultural Diversity for New Jersey State Realtors, I want to thank you and acknowledge you all for acknowledging this state, and hopefully more municipalities throughout New Jersey will take this on. Thank you very much.
Do you have a series? Can I say a few words? Did you want to say a few words? No?
Yeah. We'll just take a quick picture. Just zoom yourselves.
Should we be in the picture? We should go up in the picture. Karen, we should all be in the picture. It's a council resolution.
Oh. Should be held a press session?
Sure.
Yeah, it smells. Okay. Thank you, Sarah.
Oh, wait, I was just looking at your picture. Do you have the citation?
Uh, somewhere. Right there.
You guys should be in the picture. Debbie, go on up.
Yes. Quick, you can make sure.
We all signed it.
Yeah, Susan and Jerry, too.
Yes, please.
I'm going to stand on the steps.
There we go. We all had a bet today, isn't that right?
Who, little Jerry, who?
Yeah, Jerry, who?
Yeah, who, more?
Really, more?
This one.
Okay.
There we go, everybody get it. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget your glasses.
We'll give that to you.
Before you leave, it looks like you're getting ready to leave, but...
Fantastic.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you to Mr. Mies for your kind words, your eloquent remarks, and James also for your work even that you've done in town as well. What I think should happen next, our next step, is that our former governor abolished the Council on Affordable Housing, and what I thought we were going to do, since Joe and I are involved in mediation with West Essex Highlands, is create a resolution in support of reinstating the Council on Affordable Housing. So if you want to work on that next, we'll be happy to work with you on that.
In any way that I can support.
Good, okay.
One of my other, you know, beyond New Jersey Realtors, a passion project of affordability in New Jersey. So I'm working with other municipalities, in and outside of my real estate hat, to make that happen.
Well, if you find that resolution, good, then let us know.
Yes, anything I can do, let me know.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. It's really a privilege.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Pat, just as you said, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. You know, always feel, excuse me. You should, okay.
All right.
Thank you. You should always feel free to come to see us, really. Anytime you have any ideas or any suggestions, you know, we'd love to hear your opinions and your suggestions. You know, that's what could make West Orange an even better township than what it is. But thank you again.
Jason, your words go hand in hand with the grant application that we just submitted last week on behalf of the township, a Bloomberg Art Installation Grant. We had members of Talk About Diversity, we had members of the Council, Board of Ed, our West Orange Arts Council, Thomas Edison, National Historic Park, people from all different organizations in town submitting a grant for reinventing our history through art and culture. So it was, it went in hand in hand with the words that you said about our town. Okay. Jack, you're up next with the update on redevelopment.
Again, as you can see, things are moving along down there.
Yep.
Actually, I was in the building the other day. They have a person who's permanently in there every day, and anyone who needs to go in fills out applications for apartments. They're up to five or six, I believe. There's actually two people or one person living in there now.
Yes.
So they're moving along pretty well.
That's great.
And the Battery Building is really moving fast.
We're hoping they get a table at the street fair.
Yeah, right, probably. I don't know if you saw the video that I think Perry put together, a small little video about the redevelopment and what's going on there. I haven't seen it yet, but I think it was put up online, if I'm not mistaken.
We'll check it out.
So it's moving, it's moving along.
Any retail yet?
You know what, I did not speak to them about the retail, to be quite honest with you. I was more going through the building with, looking at the apartments and what was going on in the Battery Building.
Okay.
But I'll find out about the retail.
How does the Battery, what's the status for the Battery Building, first tenants?
They're talking about, well, first he told me June, but I'm not so sure it's going to be June. I think it might be around August. But it's, it's pretty much, they're putting in the kitchens and the bathrooms now.
Do they have a model open yet?
Uh, no, because they haven't completed one yet. But if you walk through the building, you can see the difference in, you know, some of them, they have the bathrooms and they're putting the kitchen together now. It's really nice.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Council President, can I ask Mr. Sayers a question?
Yes.
Mr. Sayers?
Yes.
Real quickly, I know it has nothing to do with downtown redevelopment, but with the Chit Chat Diner, any status on their potential opening? I mean, it's something that everybody is asking me about.
I said that, I'm sorry.
With the Chit Chat Diner?
Right.
Any, you know, estimated opening?
No, they've been moving a little slowly, to be honest with you. They've had some problems with contractors, from what I understand from Mr. Tracy, but it seems as though the last two weeks, they've been moving along pretty well. So I don't have an estimate time of when that's going to happen.
Okay.
I can talk to Tom and try to figure that out.
Thank you, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Sign that quickly, please, and I'll just tell Michelle. Let the record reflick. Councilwoman Castlin.
My apologies. Stuck on 287 in traffic.
And then in the parking lot, the work going on.
Yes, I saw that.
Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome.
Council, yes?
Yeah, could I, at the last council meeting, I had just raised some issues about the construction completion requirements of the governing documents, and we basically agreed that we'd come back today and talk about it. And I wondered, are you, are you ready to?
I, actually, I did talk to our council last week about that, and there was a section that she pointed out to me in our redevelopment document, which is redevelopment agreement by and between Township West Orange and EGP Urban Renewal dated February 26, 2016. On page 210 of 262, it says, "Construction Schedule Exhibit D. Unless otherwise told or adjusted as provided for in agreement, commencement of construction of Phase 1 project will commence within 30 days of the date hereof, and completion of construction of Phase 1 project will take place by February 1, 2019." So that's in the document. So they have, technically, they have until February 1st, 2019, to complete Phase 1.
Okay. Could you please forward that to the council? Because I don't recall receiving that back in 2016. I was just going off of the redevelopment agreement.
Well, that's what these came in.
And the redevelopment agreement says something really different.
Well, the redevelopment agreements were amended.
Right.
When the new entity came in on Phase 1. So I don't know if you have the amended versions or the original versions.
I think that was September 2016.
Actually, this one's dated February 26, 2016. It's about 262 pages long.
Yeah, I don't think we...
Is it online?
I don't know if it's online or not, but I could probably get it from our attorneys, and I could send it out.
Yeah. Yes, because I'm quoting from the 2015 document.
Yeah, that was, that's prior to the amended document.
Okay.
So the amended document has given them until February 1st of 2019.
Okay. Could you please send that to the council? And then could you also take a look at the website, which doesn't have any of the 2016 documents up on it?
It's a lot of, it's a lot of, it's probably over 1,000 pages. But the one, one document is about 260 pages long. But there's a lot of different documents, financial agreements and things like that.
That's fine. We've had, I think, basically all the documents from 2012 to 2015.
I mean, I have the book in my office, I can give it to someone.
Locked it around long enough.
You have the book too, right? It's huge. I mean, it's about, it'd probably take us two, three hours to even put it up on.
But I'm sure they're all electronic. I mean, I'm sure they're all digital versions.
I don't know, I can find that out. I'll find out from our attorneys.
Okay.
Definitely.
Great, thank you.
Oh, you mean as opposed to someone having to scan them and upload them?
Right, right. If our attorneys have them online, I can just have them send it to us.
Okay.
Okay.
And I've also been asking about the Edison Redevelopment Phase 2 documents that the council approved back in August and September.
Correct. Thank God, everybody's back in the United States now. And I had a conversation, again, the same day that I had a conversation with our attorneys with regard to this document, they were reaching out to Mr. Diaz to speak to him about where the documents were and how long we were going to get them back. I spoke to Ms. Codillo today, and she said she was waiting back to hear from his attorney, and she was going to hopefully have an answer from me sometime tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Show any comments on redevelopment?
No, I'm going to try to get there Friday to take a peek, take a walk through.
Very interesting.
Yep.
Make sure you wear your hard hat, though.
Yes, we did the last...
He issued them, yeah.
Just one more thing, I'm sorry. Before we move on, I know we have been talking about the pilot for Phase 1, Edison Redevelopment Phase 1.
Right.
They are extremely complicated, in my opinion, extremely complicated documents. Thank you very much for getting, getting it, Mr. Gross, and I think Mr. Hanley had another document as well. I'm wondering, can we, instead of trying to discuss that at the meeting tonight, could we just schedule maybe a little presentation and maybe with a couple of slides, just to sort of walk people through how the pilot's going to work at the next council meeting? Because I think there'll be a May 1 bill for the pilot, correct?
Well, actually, the pilot will be taking effect as of January 1. So we're going to probably, to avoid confusion, probably going to do it with the August, it will probably go in June or early July for the August bill. So by then, there'll be some occupancies, more occupancy as well, but not that, that is not a determining factor, but I want to get the, I prefer to do the billing after we actually get a tax rate.
Okay.
As opposed to doing an estimate on an estimate.
Right, right, okay.
I want to do a bill on a tax rate, so...
Okay. So the documents, the governing documents say you start the accrual after you get the first temporary certificate of occupancy. We've had that for the residential or retail. So that's what starts the ball moving, and you'll actually be accruing in this period now, but will not send out a bill on May 1st.
Correct. I mean, they'll be paying, they're going to continue to pay the taxes, and then what, once we do the billing, we're going to re-characterize what the taxes represent, and then give them a follow-up bill for any additional monies that they owe.
And this is what I was meaning about. It's really difficult to describe all of this stuff that's going on.
I actually thought the document that you had put together was pretty simple.
It's very simple.
I mean, this document, to me, I don't think is that complicated. It spells it all out and shows the numbers. I mean, I'm not so sure what everybody would want to know about.
John, can you just give us an overview of this pilot calculation? You can, you could talk about the land assessments and improvements.
Yeah, I guess the 50,000-foot level of this is that the property owner in the redevelopment, at a minimum, has to continue to pay the amount of taxes that they paid in 2017, and...
The land tax?
What's that?
The land tax?
No, no, the entire amount, that is their minimum.
Okay.
So the, then what happens, and that is translated into the pilot payment, and against the pilot, since the property owner has to continue to pay the land tax, the land tax becomes a credit against the pilot. So in essence, they continue to pay the same amount, at least initially, plus they, there is an administrative fee of about 1 percent, or of 1 percent that we will bill and they will pay. In terms of the, where it gets a little complicated, or at least from a verbal discussion, complicated, while they will basically pay the same, the county will end up not receiving as much of the money that is currently being paid as they have in the past, and the township and entities, or township entities, will receive those funds. So there is a bonus, if you will, an initial bonus during this phase. Once it's all rented out, you know, we're looking at an absorption rate of somewhere between 12 to 15 per month, which would probably take a couple of years for it to fill out. Once it fills out, then there's going to be a substantial difference, again, so that the township will, will receive. And just to note, you know, there's always a question of, you know, what about the Board of Ed? Keep in mind, the Board of Ed always gets its money. Board of Ed does not, you know, we raise the money that gives the Board ahead based on the formulas from taxpayers, but the total amount that the Board of Ed receives is based on its budget, and they receive that even if we don't collect money on their behalf from certain taxpayers. They still get their money, and then that comes from, out of our, out of our funds. So pretty much the only entity that has a negative impact on this is the county, the county.
Because 95 percent comes to the township and the 5 percent goes to the county.
Correct.
Right. And built up into that pilot, the Board of Ed, that rate was built into that pilot to take that into consideration, that it's coming to the township, when you say to make them hold, to make the Board of Ed hold the money.
Well, the, what's that, the Board, the discussion about the Board of Ed, the funds that go to the Board of Ed really are not impacted by any of this. Because they, like I say, they get, they set their budget, they set a levy, we are by statute required to send them that levy. If we, if we collected no money at all, we would still be required to send them that levy, so...
So just, just as an example, under the property tax structure now, the, for that property, the schools get almost $256,000 in a full year of the property tax structure. Under the first year of the pilot, they get $205,000 less, so they get roughly $50,000.
Yeah, look it up, if I can just, it's not that they get less, they do not get less. This particular property's contribution towards school taxes is reduced, its contribution towards it. The Board of Ed still gets it because we're required to fill in the gap. So even though this particular property is not required to pay it, the township is required to pay it. Now, we have additional funds coming from this property directly to us to pay that, so it ends up going around in that kind of circle. But the Board of Ed does not, the contribution to the Board of Ed, the amount of money that goes to the Board of Ed does not change. We are by statute required to send them that levy. If we, if we collected no money at all, we would still be required to send them that levy, so...
So, just, just as an example, uh, under the property tax structure now, the, uh, for that property, the schools get almost two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, uh, in, in a full year of, of the property tax structure. Under the first year of the pilot, uh, they get two hundred and five thousand dollars less, so they get roughly, uh, fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, look it up. If I can just, just...
Okay.
It's not that they get less. They do not get less. The, this particular property's contribution towards, uh, school taxes is reduced. Its contribution towards it, the Board of Ed still gets it because we're required to fill in the gap. So, even though this particular property is not required to pay it, the township is required to pay it. Now, we have additional funds coming from this property directly to us to pay that, so it ends up going around in, in that kind of circle. But the Board of Ed does not, the, the contribution to the Board of Ed, the, the amount of money that goes to the Board of Ed does not change.
True.
It's just how...
It's just how they get it.
It's the cash flow of those funds.
So, so like I said, I think this is too complicated to, to talk about without having graphics, but from the, from the spreadsheet that you did, it does say that the revenue difference for the schools is two hundred and five thousand dollars.
That's not what it says, but I understand what you're trying to say.
I'm just saying, it says revenue difference, and it says, uh, the schools get a negative two hundred and five thousand, uh, the municipal open space rate gets...
Here, here's where I'm having an issue. You're saying the schools get. That's not what this says. There is a revenue difference of where, how we're raising the money. We're under the school tax that we, we, we charge and we bill everyone. We are no longer charging that to that property, and we, the township, are not getting that money. The Board of Ed gets, always gets their money, because they, they have a, a levy. If, they're saying their, their levy is two hundred and fifteen million dollars, um, they get two hundred and fifteen million dollars whether, whether, no matter how we assess it. So, so, so that's my only, my only quibble, and it's, it, at this point, I mean, it's a phil, it's, it's a philosoph, to some extent philosophical, because the dollars, no, nobody gets hurt financially in this, except the county. Philosophically, the monies come to the township and the township pays it to the Board of Ed, and, or, the, the, or the township assesses a particular property, and that money then goes to the Board of Ed. It's the same dollars, it's just a matter of, of, of the cash flow that it goes to. So, the Board of Ed always, and we use the word gets, it's clear, the Board of Ed always gets its money. This does not change that.
So, if I understand you correctly, what you're saying is the reduction in your spreadsheet of two hundred and five thousand dollars to the school district probably needs a...
You keep saying to the school district. It doesn't say that there. The reduction is from the school tax.
Yes.
Okay. The school tax that we, we, we assess a property, a, a tax for school. We, uh, we do not receive that school tax. Township does not receive that school tax. It's not the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed gets that money because we're required, because, because we did not receive it from that property. We're still required to pay the Board of Ed.
And where does that money come from that we're going to pay the Board of Ed, replacing the two hundred and five thousand?
It, it comes, it comes from, it, initially, it gets, it's spread across all taxpayers, because it gets, it gets built into the tax rate, which also, our rate, also gets built into the tax rate, and to the extent that we got relief that keeps us from having to raise our rate higher, commensurally higher, it's offset by the money that comes from that project. So, that ultimately, the taxpayer does not pay additional because of this. If you look at the cash flow, the way it works, they pay a little bit more in taxes, in school taxes, and they pay a little bit less in municipal taxes.
Okay. I didn't realize that, that the municipality was going to be forwarding that part of the revenue that's coming from the pilot to the school district. Is that what you're saying is happening?
I'm saying that the municipality, we, municipality receives that money towards its, its tax obligations.
Mm-hmm.
And that would, to the extent that it raised, to the extent that the, that the difference is adjusted through other, through other property taxpayers, slightly upward, the municipal rate is impacted downward, um, um, frankly, even to a larger rate, because the amount of cash flow they're receiving is larger.
Would it, would it be, to, to, to simplify what you're saying, would it be correct to say that municipal taxpayers will be paying a little less because of this, and, uh, their school portion of their tax bill will go up a little higher because of this?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
And, and by the nature of it, since the, since the amount we're receiving is more, the, the impact on the municipal side will, the positive impact on the municipal side will be greater than the negative impact on the, on the Board of Ed's side.
So, I don't see any of that in this spreadsheet, and I hate, I hesitate to ask you to do more, but perhaps you could add another few lines to sort of demonstrate that part of the cash flow process? And maybe we can discuss it...
I, I kind of think it does, but I'd be happy to, maybe I should show you where it is.
Okay.
I think it does, you know, you, you, we, we can go through it again.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of rolling eyes like out there, so let's, I, I don't want to discuss any more unless anybody else does, not, tonight.
Do you have a question?
No, no.
No, no.
Okay.
I, it was a good, it was a good document, and I, I understood it, so thank you, Mr. Gross. But maybe, you know, another simpler document for, you know, that financial. Thank you. Council liaison.
That's it for...
Want to keep going for council liaison?
Okay.
Sure. Uh, I want to thank everybody...
Excuse me, before they go, do you want to give them a citation or a statement?
Victor hasn't signed it yet. How about we get it to you?
Sure.
Would that be...
Yeah.
Okay. Every day? Yeah, no, we, I was listening.
She gets a quiz, too, remember?
She does.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Uh, Sunday was, uh, Earth Day celebration. We were up at The Rock, uh, planting some trees, mulching a lot of the ones that survived from last year. There was a, a lot of people there, not as many as last year, uh, so, so we had to work longer. I want to thank, I want to thank ShopRide for their healthy and not-so-healthy snacks, and, uh, we'll be having more of these events that you can get involved in, because there's a, uh, we've gotten a grant that's going to get us a lot more trees that need to be planted, so...
One hundred more trees are coming in. I think it's more fun to plant the trees. We planted five hundred trees last year, which is why we had so many hundred, we had hundreds of people there. Uh, this year, you know, taking inventory and mulching and weeding is not very exciting, but...
Not glamorous.
It was a beautiful day. It didn't rain, and, uh, and, and all the work got done, and it actually looked really nice.
It does.
Mm-hmm. So, we're talking at five seventy-seven Mount Pleasant Avenue, across the street from the West Orange Recycling Center. Uh, there's six acres that Open Space Commission purchased in two thousand and thirteen, um, and went on to receive another grant to design eight various gardens on the site. So, that's what, that's what we're trying to do.
We had a bunch of Cub Scouts and their families. We had a bunch of people from, uh, the Open Space Committee and a bunch of people from...
Environmental Commission.
The environmental commission.
It was Cub Scout Troop one oh seven, so we thanked them. Very nice.
That's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, just wanted to go, you know, going along, you know, get ready for the downtown West Orange, you know, Street Fair, June second. It's going to be a fantastic day, hoping for great weather, great turnout, and also remember, it also is in conjunction with Edison Day, and the Edison site will be open. There'll be no admission, and so please make your efforts, come down, get a little education about all the great things that were developed in West Orange, not the light bulb, but, you know, other things, you know, the car-charged battery, the charging station, everything that you take for granted today, especially with electric cars, all the technology was built here. So, we're very proud of that, and that's where, why we're the community where invention lives. Also, just wanted to make a note, too, on the same day, we are planning through the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, and with Easy Ride and New Jersey State Transportation, we are planning to do a bike rodeo, uh, which will be held at Washington School, starting at nine o'clock. We'd like to get everybody who's interested to please reach out. Lori Caffner from my board on pedestrian safety will be sending out questionnaires and, and, and people signing up, because we need a limited amount, you know, so many people to make sure it does take off, so we want to make sure we get a good, um, participation rate. Easy Ride New Jersey Transportation is going to be supplying a lot of giveaways. There'll be bike helmets, there'll be handouts, educational handouts, so we're really looking for a good turnout, and more news will be coming. Will be on the township website, so we're looking for great participation. But have a great day down at the Street Fair, with some great food, some great vendors, and of course, the Edison site. Uh, we're really happy about that. Also, opening very shortly will be Olive and Willow, the new bakery. Uh, we're really excited about that happening. Ms. Brill, do we have a definite date from our downtown executive director?
She's open for the week of, of Mother's Day.
Okay. Hopefully for Mother's Day weekend, it'll be open, so we hope you'll come down to Main Street. And there are a lot of new vendors and stores on the Main Street corridor. We hope you should come down and see what kind of great quality items they do offer, and take advantage of what's down on Main Street. Other than that, the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting is being moved because of the West Orange Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner, so it was scheduled for the ninth of May, and we're moving it to the eighteenth of May. Uh, and we will be having it, of course, at our normal location, the Essex County Educational Center at Turtleback Zoo, starting at seven thirty. Anthony, I made your request, so, it's, uh, we have to thank the County of Essex for allowing us to use this great facility, because we're able to use the, uh, smart boards and the electronic equipment there to show what we're doing, to show the great things and the great designs, uh, from our board members and such. Hopefully, uh, and when I talk to Mr. Lepore, is that we'll have our final drawings for the Main Street Road Diet, which, when we had the preliminary drawings, uh, everybody's very excited about, the new layout for Main Street, the new design, the painting, that hopefully will bring that whole concept up to Pleasant Valley Way, to make our roadways a lot more manageable, a lot safer, to control the speed limits. I mean, other than enforcement, you can have all the lights, you can have all the laws, the laws and ordinances, but without enforcement, it really doesn't come to pass, but it's also through education, and the big education is our students, and a big education is the drivers. Keep your phone down, don't text and drive, don't talk and drive. The same thing we tell our students, and that's other things that we're working on. The Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board is designing through New Jersey Transportation, and Easy Ride are the educational, uh, materials that we'll be handing out to students, particularly not only at the bike rodeo, but in the schools. And another great thing that we're working on is another grant through Easy Ride is the Safe Roots to School. Uh, my board, and we're working on it very thoroughly. I, I'm going to need my council colleagues to support a resolution, so we can apply for the grant, and this grant will help us design complete streets, safe routes to school, which, it's better if our students could walk to school. A lot of kids would like to bike and walk to school. It, it also does two things. It becomes a health issue. You know, students, they don't get as much exercise as they should, but if they could walk to school, ride to school, in a safe route environment, it's a benefit to the whole community. So, those are other things that we're working on, and I can't say often enough, but I would like residents to come. I hear people, I look on Facebook, and people make comments. They should come to our board meetings at, at our West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. Ask the questions from the experts. We have our township engineer, we have multiple residents who are traffic engineers, we have the Downtown Alliance, we have the Edison Site, we have the Board of Education, you have myself from the Town Council. We want people to come and ask the questions and let us know their concerns, instead of just going out on social media and making comments and not asking the questions from the experts. So, we look forward to being there at our next meeting. We have a meeting every month. The calendar on the township website lists when our meetings are, and they are Wednesday nights, normally the second Wednesday of the month. This month in May, we're moving our meeting to the eighteenth, so people can go to the, uh, West Orange Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner. So, we made sure we got it there before Council President McCartney, uh, requested it. Other than that, I can only say, you know, please visit our, our downtown, the Main Street Corridor. There are a lot of great restaurants that people haven't discovered yet, the new bakeries, open to two bakeries. There's, um, Sweet Garden, and, which is across from Washington School, and of course, Olive and Willow, which is downright by the Edison Development. And other than that, uh, that's all I have to say, Council President. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you. So, while you were out planting, I stopped by. You're all working very, very hard on my way to, uh, the Safety Self-Defense Seminar that, uh, our police officers hosted. A big thank you to Lieutenant Kevin Bowlin and Lieutenant George Lopez. I'm putting this together along with the West Orange Recreation Department. Well over a hundred residents attended. Uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, students with their, with their moms, uh, were, were there, and it was a really great course. Dennis Watson from Krav Mega Foundation gave the presentation, and also kudos to Perry Bad, Badkov, our social media coordinator. He had, uh, saw this, and he had brought it to us. But the, you know, it was really, really informative. Sometimes we don't think, we just don't pay attention, or, you know, the world is looking down on your cell phone, and it's about awareness. So, our, our lieutenant spoke about being aware, uh, rule number one, and some pretty good moves that we're, uh, we, uh, got to do on the mats. So, thank you to West Orange High School for, uh, hosting the event and for letting us use their, uh, their mats for, for the seminar. So, very informative and, um, very well attended. So, kudos to all that put it together. Also, I'm staying, thank you with, and partnering with our school district. Thank you to Principal Hayden Moore, uh, his wonderful staff, our students, and, uh, Mrs. Duffy and her staff are assisting with getting our senior citizens to last week's senior citizen prom. Uh, I was heartbroken. I always like to stop by, uh, this year I was working, but it, it was just great, and again, Perry had some great clips on Facebook. If, if you saw, uh, the students interacting with our residents, it looked like everybody had a great time. And also, a, a thank you to, uh, Sedesco, uh, the food services that the school district uses. They're very generous in providing, um, you know, the, uh, refreshments for the evening. And the week before, we had a great turnout, um, with, um, residents attending, um, the high school play, uh, in the Heights, which many, many folks enjoyed, so thank you for all that came out, and glad you enjoyed that presentation. Uh, last week, after our last, our last week, two weeks ago, after our last meeting, I had reached out to some of the residents that, that came. I spoke to Mrs. Duffy, and the next day, they sent out, um, packages, um, of all of our senior events. So, for any reason you do not have, um, you're not receiving any emails, you want to get on the eBlast list, or you like, if you don't look at email and you would like, um, to get, uh, a mailing of our different, um, events, please contact the, uh, the Health Department at three two five four one oh five. Or you could just, also, if you go, do go on the website, which, um, it's in various places, so it's easy to find, so, um, that has been, uh, a great response from our Senior Service Department. More folks are signing up for the eBlast, and we keep working at it. We'll get more and more, um, people aware of all that we do here in the township. Let's see. And switching gears a little bit, I, I want to thank the, uh, the McCormick family, Karen and Michael McCormick, uh, dear, dear, dear friends of mine. They, um, eight years ago tragically started a foundation when their son, Michael, had, um, tragically passed in a severe car accident on Eagle Rock Avenue. Um, Michael was a great student. He had went to West Orange School District. He graduated Seton Hall Prep, and, uh, since that time, the, um, Karen and Mike, their, their daughter Megan, their family, and, uh, many good friends on their foundation, worked really hard, raising tens of thousands of dollars to give, uh, much-needed scholarships to West Orange High School students and Seton Hall Prep students, uh, to attend college. Um, this year, the McCormicks, my, um, donated a scoreboard to the West Orange PAL at their site, and, uh, it was a very touching tribute, um, to the family and to Michael. Uh, Michael was a great little PAL athlete. He loved football, and he was a great baseball player. I think he was one of the few kids that actually hit a home run over the fence at, uh, at the PAL, and was honored with the honorary Johnny's Pizza from Johnny's Pizzeria. So, uh, that's what happens when you hit a home run at the, at the PAL. Johnny's hooks you up with a nice pie. So, um, just very touching, and it just, uh, wonder, wonderful moment, and, uh, thank you very much to, to their family. Council President.
It's a beautiful tribute.
It was beautiful.
Very nice. Very nice. Thank you. So, we have the West Orange Arts Council, uh, I'm sorry, West Orange Environmental Commission, uh, meets on the last Wednesday of each month. Tomorrow's our meeting here in Town Hall and Room one oh five. Next meeting will be in May, last Wednesday of the month. Uh, this Friday is Arbor Day, April twenty-seventh, at two o'clock at Washington Street School. Two trees are being planted for former Governor Brendan Byrne and the educator at Washington Street School, Patricia Villarosa. That will be at two o'clock. Everyone's invited to Washington Street School. And that evening, on, uh, Friday evening, April twenty-seventh, the Police Department is doing a seminar at Liberty Middle School for the Take Me Home, uh, program, that they came here and gave a presentation on signing someone up. If you have a family member or someone that you would like to sign up for, the police to have a record of them. Just an excellent seminar at, excellent program at Liberty Middle School. On May second, a planning board meeting, that, May second, next Wednesday, here in, in council chambers. We don't have our agenda yet for that. May fifth and sixth of the weekend, I have a whole calendar of events here. May 5th and 6th of the weekend, I have a whole calendar of events here, May 5th and 6th, the West Orange Arts Council is having a Mother's Day boutique at 551 Valley Road at their gallery and gift shop, many handmade items there at Elm Valley Road. All day, May 5th and 6th, you can visit W O-A R T S dot org, find out more information about that. I appreciate that you moved your meeting, because the West Orange Chamber of Commerce is having their 20th Annual Community Awards Dinner, May 9th, Wednesday evening, May 9th, at the Wilshire Grant, where we are recognizing two police officers, five firefighters, one educator, and we announce our business of the year. You can visit West Orange Chamber, West Orange is spelled out, westorangechamber.com, for more information and ticket information on that event. And the very next day, the Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park have their annual Glenmont Garage cocktail reception. Proceeds from that event, go to conserve the Edison Electric Charging Station in the Glenmont Garage in Llewellyn Park, at the home, at the Glenmont home of Thomas Edison. That is on May 10th, from 5:00 to 7:30. Tickets are available at F O Edison, Friends of Edison, dot org. Everyone is invited to attend.
Spring has sprung in West Orange.
Spring has sprung. Hit all at once. Yes, did. Okay. And the invitations are beautiful, so these are, please.
Yeah, they're different, they're nice. They're very attractive.
They're very different. Thank you. Thank you. Designed by one of our board members, Rich Silvanch. Okay. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We did have a late start, so we will open with our public comment. If anyone does have a comment, please come up, name and address. Yes? Mrs. Morelli?
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. I have a couple of things. One is the soliciting ordinance, there's a problem. On the hours, or the hours it should end, or the hour it should end, this is the special or specific licenses, Article 2, and I lobbied, I can't believe this got by. It's a great ordinance, it's one of the few, I think in the county or wherever, where they do a background check. But there's this one part, I don't know how this happened, under hours for commercial peddling, display and contents of permit, surrender of permit, A, no commercial peddling shall be done except between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and sunset, as, here, and sunset on each weekday, the time of the sunset, this is what's crazy, to be determined by reference to the same in the Star Ledger newspaper, published on that day and on Saturdays, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. This came to my attention one evening, somebody was soliciting some young man, and he insisted when he got to my door, after I got about five phone calls, because it was dark, it was almost 9:00 o'clock, he said, "I can stay out here till 9:00 o'clock." So I went back and got this out, and I said, "Something's wrong." So I think that needs to be changed. That's a really, I hate to say it, but it's stupid. It really is. The other thing I'm talking, I need to talk about, oh, the, what you might call, the symposium that they're having Friday night at Liberty School, they will have buses, so they should call for seniors to get a ride. That wasn't on the original flyer.
I didn't see that.
So that's a good thing, because it starts at 6:00. I think that, oh, I have a public announcement. We're, in trying to start another intergenerational event, we're looking for an amount soliciting for veterans of the Second World War to talk to middle school children. These kinds of events work out great. We just did one with the 5th graders in Redwood School, it was awesome, it was really awesome. So now, I've had people asking me, you know, we want to hear stories, veterans never talked about this, and if there are any veterans out there, every day you look in the obituary column, there are fewer and fewer, please get in touch with us or me, we want to start this program. I think that's it. Oh, Mr. Krokoviac, the township portion of the taxes is you, me, and everybody around here that owns homes. It's that simple. Good night.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I want to follow up on what Mrs. Morelli said. I had a question about this whole idea of the pilots, what Mr. Gross was talking about. My understanding way back when, when the redevelopment agreement was being discussed about four years ago, was that with the pilots, the town was going to see the windfall, because they wouldn't be paying county tax, it wouldn't be paying school tax. And there seemed to be a commitment, I don't know if it was ever memorialized or recorded, but that would help, because everyone was concerned about how many schoolchildren were going to come out of that development, that the township would pay for, would make whole the school district, or however many students were coming out of there. What we're discussing tonight is a little bit different. It's actually the portion of the tax base levy, I guess it's called, pardon me if I'm using the wrong rate, that would normally, that the township collects, that would normally go to the school district that is now a pilot. And I'm just wondering, according, I have heard that the state is looking at legislation to require townships to send that money to the school district, but at this point, I don't believe that that is in fact state law. So I'm just wondering where that is, if it is in our contract, and is there a budget line item in our municipal budget that says that we, that this $205,000 is not going to be spent by the municipality, but is going directly, the money that is coming in from the pilot is going directly to the Board of Education and not, we are taking that money, and then the rest of the taxpayers, as Mrs. Morelli said, the rest of the taxpayers, and not PRISM, and not the people who are paying the pilot, are going to be making up that $205,000. And I just also wanted to, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I wanted to add my voice to those who are requesting that we get all of the data from the Senior Citizen Survey. I used to work in advertising and corporate communications for a Fortune 50 company, and have worked a lot with market research. I know the cross tabs, and we're talking about data, not just across the board, but data in specific markets. For example, on the transportation issue, not looking at the entire population of the people who responded to that question, but to the people who say they don't drive. And you drill in, and you look specifically at that, at those respondents to see what their issues are. Same thing with affordability of housing, we should look and see what people are really talking about. Are they talking about wanting to have more senior housing, or are they talking about wanting to have, to stay in their homes and be able to afford it because of taxes? I think all of that data is there if we get the cross tabs, and if we can get all of the data sliced and diced. I mean, this stuff's done, you know, electron, it's on computer, I can't imagine that the people from Montclair State, they're a really a good, a reputable organization, they should have that material. So I really think that the point of the senior survey, it shouldn't be to pat ourselves on the back and say, gee, aren't we doing a good job here? When we do market research, we were always looking to find out how, to find the issues and how we could improve things. And quite honestly, the top line that we got about, you know, the majority of people are neither satisfied nor dissatisfied, doesn't tell us anything. We need to look to see who are the people who are dissatisfied or have challenges, and see, and look specifically at their little group, and see how we can address those issues. Because I think that, I mean, that's the point of doing the survey, is to improve things for those people in need. So I just appreciate that we, hope that we can get that information in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFenzenzo. Just a couple of events that are happening this weekend. First, at the Environmental Center, and Roseland is our County Earth Day Celebration, that runs from 11:00 to 4:00. And then, on, also on, who is it, 28th, yes, also on Saturday is the Drug Enforcement, Drug Takeback Day. West Orange is a key participant. Not only will your collection box be open that day, but your collection box is open year-round. So it provides people with an opportunity to drop off their unused, old, and unwanted prescription drugs in an anonymous and safe way, so they don't lay around the house where they can be used improperly or illegally. And it also allows the drugs to be recycled and destroyed in an environmentally friendly way. So we encourage everyone to, of course, bring their drugs to West Orange's collection box, and there's also 15 other police departments that have permanent boxes, and then four police departments have temporary sites that day. And of course, if you can't bring it that day, it's open year-round. Also on your, in front of you, I left a copy of our Essex County Spring Events Guide, which outlines all that, plus a whole lot more. Fishing derbies, movies at night, events at the Crest Memorial Iris Gardens, and of course, our collection days for household hazards, waste, and computer and electronics, that's all in here. I'm not going to bore you with all those details, you can visit essexcounty nj dot org, and all the events are posted in our events section. And of course, we'll be back at the next meeting to give you another update.
Talk about spring has sprung. This is, this is chock full of information.
Yes.
I am going to elaborate, though, on the Free Friday Flicks. This just looks interesting, because it's at Kipps Castle, 22 Crestmont Road in Verona, and they're showing films. And the first will be on Friday, June 8th, rain date, Saturday, June 9th. Beauty and the Beast will be on June 8th, and Mary Poppins on June 15th. So just a beautiful setting, and.
Thank you.
I like the ones in the summer on the roof of the parking deck, so I look forward to those.
I haven't gotten that schedule.
Not yet, that's summer, we'll wait for summer. Thanks, Jan. Do you have some available on this table out here for?
I have two.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comment. Any remarks? I want, I wanted to ask the legal department, though, about Mrs. Morelli's comment about the solicitation ordinance. Should it be determined by the Star Ledger's account on sunset?
I mean, I don't recall why that particular means was chosen. Off the top of my head, it's been a long time since that ordinance was last revised. You have to have some objective criteria. My understanding of the time of sunset, it's not really dark at sunset, the published time, whatever that is, it's when the sun goes down, but there's still ambient light. So it shouldn't be a problem, I wouldn't think, from the standpoint of having people coming to your door in darkness. If there's some alternative, it can be used. I mean, I don't know what the alternative would be, it's up to you guys.
I'll think of that. I'm sure through the mayor's office, we can find veterans, because we are the most decorated community here. And I was so pleased on Sunday, we were giving out Eagle Scout, proclamation from the mayor and a citation from the council over at the Elks, and I was very pleased to see Ralph Pansyello, our deputy mayor, up and about, and he seemed so proud to be able to give the VFW award to the scout. So I'm sure we can get that information for the intergenerational event. Claire, we don't agree often, but I do agree with delving into the senior data. The object is to improve the services that we have, or to delve into the details, if there's a way to do that, then I agree that we should. And John, not to reopen the whole pilot conversation again, but I think what I was trying to say before about the pilot rate, is that in the pilot itself, it includes the anticipatory school levy. So, you know, because I, only because I remember when this conversation came up months ago, Jersey City passed some, passed an ordinance to make sure that this, a school portion, because we do have to make the school whole, that that was included in the actual monthly pilot payment. Yes? To some extent, yes?
I will, I will attempt to put a, something together that kind of explains how this works. What you're talking about is supplemental payments.
Okay.
That would be a supplement, if you, in other words, what was discussed here tonight would be a supplemental payment above and beyond what they would receive in taxes, that would be funded. So, because the problem is, is that most people just do not realize that the Board of Ed always receives their funds. They, you know, the big question is about, is whether or not there's an additional drain on the schools, do they have, are there additional costs? And those are all legitimate questions to talk about. But at the end of the day, Board of Ed passes a budget that it deems what it needs in order to educate the children that are coming to the system, and the township is required to give them that money, whether we receive it from one taxpayer or 15,000 taxpayers. So the Board of Ed will get its levy, but I'll try to put something together that kind of shows that I got, in my mind, I have a couple of ideas, maybe, maybe using tax bills or something like that, something that's relevant to people, maybe they can understand. A before and after.
And I could show that, how the pilot is made up.
Kind of a before and after, you know, with a pilot and without a pilot, what does it look like?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, just sticking with that, that thought right there, just going back to Jersey City, Ho-Boken. Let's not forget, they're, they're funded, a lot of them are under the state.
I know what you're going to say.
With the school districts. So it's a different type of funding mechanism, so, and now they're having all these major, you know, with almost a good percentage of the, of the, these cities are being redeveloped and with the pilots, so, again, there's, you know, different, different conversations, but I think it would be important if you could explain that, because I think because of what people see on articles in the news and whatnot, what's going on there, I think it's important to compare it to here. Also, you know, we mentioned, I think, what was the figure, Councilman, 205,000 or whatever the.
Right, on this calculation.
I don't have mine in front of me. And again, once the leases open up and additional revenue comes towards that, so my question is, not to make the conversation more muddy, but once that revenue comes in, what you said before, just to have a clarification, that's coming to the township side, or a little bit would go towards, even though I know it's all one big bill, but when you get, when you get your tax bill in the, in the mail and you see the picture of the pie, is that picture of the pie going to change for that property when we get additional income? Or it's going to the township side?
No. And the picture you don't see in that pie is, you don't see the slice, the pilot slice. So you don't know how relevant that is to the whole thing. So, but, I'll put, I'll put something together, I mean, all, all the funds do come to the township, there's no question about it, and it is applied towards tax relief in one, one shape or another.
Yes.
I mean, it is, it is for the benefit of the township taxpayers. You know, based on the needs, as, just like the Board of Ed determines its needs, the council determines its needs, and then it gets applied as revenue. It's not a, it's not, it's not funds that get to be spent separate, like a, oh, we want to spend that money on this, this, and the other thing. want to spend that money on this, this, and the other thing. It just goes into the general funds, and it's applied, you know, as, as revenue against your budget, which ultimately then determines what your bottom-line tax is. But I'll put something together, I think, to try to, try to demonstrate that a little bit, in a, in a visual way, maybe.
Who's going to have ad graphics?
And then my next question is for Mr. Sayer. So Montclair State, where I last left it, Erin, what was away, are we going to get, because we don't, the information that's being talked about with the, the computer information was never given to the township yet. Montclair State still has that tab information. Did we get that from them yet or no? And where does that stand?
I think that there was a request made for that data, and they've indicated that it's not operable, that under the definitions of public document in the Oprah statute, it's not operable material, because it's created by or done by a, a public educational institute.
And this is Montclair State, not us. This is Montclair State's feedback. That's Montclair State's feedback to us, not, that's not us speaking. This is Montclair.
No, it's Montclair State.
Which we have a contract with, too. So we have to go back on.
I don't know.
I think Mr. Trank looked at the contract.
I don't know, I mean, they may be able to do what people want them to do. I don't know. I mean, nobody asks the technical questions.
So, so the good news is, is that Mrs. Krkowiak, no one is patting themselves on the back here, not, not anyone up here, not anyone in the health department, especially not Mrs. Duffy and Mrs. Bianchi and, and Ms. Ivino. Everyone's working really, really hard. They take the information, and they have the long form, the 75-page document that is online. They have information where they, you know, we understand with transportation, there are different needs, and you made some really good points, and they are looking at all of those needs. So it's not because, and I think I feel, and I don't blame folks, because when you look at the survey and some of the information, especially the way it came back with the financial component, I think, and from talking to some of the residents that have come to the meetings, I think there's this impression, why it's out there, I don't know, maybe because of the way the results came back, or the way folks are discussing the results down the public, but certain folks are, I guess, got the impression that because they fall in a certain financial bracket, they're not going to get the support they need. And that's so far from the case. We are here to assist all of our residents, no matter where you fall in whatever bracket, whether you drive, whether you don't drive, whether you live in a home, whether you live in an apartment, whether you live in a senior building. I thought it was great that we did have a lot of homeowners come back and say they did want to stay here, you know, and they, they are stressed with the taxes, and they would love to stay here, especially, you know, tomorrow night, there's a whole big talk about redevelopment in another part of the township. And maybe that could be a 55 and older community that could, could benefit those of us who, who would like to stick around for a while. I, I know my own, my mom moving down to Barnegat in a, in a 55 and older community, and with traffic and infrastructure and tax increases in other parts of the state, it's kind of hard to find those kind of situations unless you move out of state. So we know that there is a need, we're here for the need, or we wouldn't have gone, we didn't go through 10 Acts of Ward Bill just to pat ourselves on the back, so I get a little defensive with that comment. But we're here to take the information, to work at it. Already, we've seen improvements with the way we laid out the website, little tweaking here and there, and again, we're going to, you know, utilize, I said, the survey was accomplish a couple of great things. One, we utilize, we're going to have a discussion about grant writing a little bit, that's number one. But number two, awareness. I know the survey was long and it was cumbersome, but I think Mrs. Morelli, we were at a few sessions with the residents. One thing I think that was great, that the feedback I got back from the residents is, oh, wow, I didn't know you had all those programs, or I didn't, I didn't know about all these offerings. I might not have finished it, because I thought it was too long, but now I know about the offering. So, so that kind of advertisement that got out there, I think, was, was good for, for senior service department, and we're just going to keep working it. So we're a long way from patting ourselves on the back, we all recognize that, and everybody's just going to keep working really, really hard at it. And, let's see, oh, and, and Mr. Kaiser, in regards to that ordinance, and being from one that has knocked on folks' door, I could, I could kind of see why it's at a sunset, because, you know, I, you know, never wanted to knock on somebody's door after hours, or when the sun, you know, it is getting dark out, because folks, you know, number one, it's dark, you know, you don't want to, you know, upset folks by knocking on their door. And especially in the fall, you could do, you could do, say, a seven o'clock roll, but in the fall, it's dark, and, and I don't think folks should be knocking on the door.
I think that's why, I think that's why the posted time in some newspaper was chosen, because, because, as you know, from watching sunsets, if you do, and almost everybody does, when the sun goes down and passes the, you know, it's still light for some period of time, and then keeps getting darker and darker, but it's not, certainly not dark at that point, so you can still do things. And that's why I think that was chosen. Nobody wants people knocking on their door when it's dark.
No.
None of us. So that was the, the purpose of taking, of choosing that time. Other alternatives, I'm sure there are, and you just have to think about them. Whether they'll, they're better or not, I don't know, that's not my judgment.
Sure. I guess it's a conversation we, we could have, but I, I could see how that could be. Seven o'clock in the fall is, is, is dark.
Right, if you pick a time, it's going to, you know, darkness at that particular hour is going to change over the course of the year. And I think that's why it was decided to...
Sunset in the fall, in the fall is, is between 4:30 and 5:00.
Yeah, it's early.
So there shouldn't be anybody out after that period of time. So it's, it's, you know, and if you did, if you did want to play with that time, do something at that time, maybe you'd do a sunset minus X number of times, sometime before sunset, if you were going to do it, because you really do want the idea, the whole idea that this thing is flexible.
Yeah.
You know, it moves with, through, through the season. Because if you split one time, then sometimes it'll be dark, or it'll be, you know, if you picked 4:00, then in the afternoon on a Saturday or Sunday, at 4:00, it'd be way, way too early.
Right, and the other thing is that all of us have different abilities to see, and, you know, some of us fare better in some degree of darkness than others. So it's, you can't, you know, it can't be just depending on when an individual feels that it's dark out. You have to tie it to some objective criteria.
And also, too, I always encourage folks, you know, when someone does come to your door and you don't, whether, even if they do have a credential, just don't open up your door. Because I've been getting, I've been seeing more and more solicitors in my neighborhood as well, and I usually, sometimes mostly send them on their way, because most of the time, they don't have a credential. And I'll call the police departments, always feel free to call the police department, especially if you don't see credentials.
Council President?
Council, oh, Councilman?
Councilman?
Mr. Gross, you're going, you're going to love this one, okay. Not to add, not to add to your workload, but, you know, constantly hearing people back and forth about pilot, back and forth, back and forth. The one side that nobody ever talks about is, what if we didn't do the pilot, and a property owner does a tax appeal? What's the impact back to the taxpayer? Nobody ever asks that question. All I hear about is pilot this, pilot that, who's getting what, who's getting what? I'd like you to tell me, if possible, and, you know, what would have happened if we didn't do a pilot, okay? And the property owner does a tax appeal, and does it over a course of years, what's the damage to the taxpayer? I think, I think it's a fair question. I think everybody's saying about what the school's going to get, and what's, and what's the net, all right, the school gets more, municipal gets less.
If a property is allowed to deteriorate, eventually its value is going to drop to a point where it's, has any marginal value at all, depending on what it is. At some point in time, the value will drop to where someone will do something with it, and that's the question, you know, what's, it's the lowest and worst use.
Right.
So, I mean, so, so, you know, you're right now, in its current condition, taxes are shy of a half a million dollars, you know, where's it going to go if you did nothing with it, or it was allowed to deteriorate and drop? I mean, depending on what the use would be, and I'm not, not an expert in that site, but I know that there were a lot of attempts to use that many, many years ago, in the condition it was 15, 20 years ago, to make it a viable retail site, or, you know, or secondary sites for secondary businesses, and I guess it wasn't successful. So as the value drops, if the value dropped in half, the money we're receiving now would drop in half. So it's really, you know, in your scenario, it has to do with, you know, what, what's the lowest value of that property that it goes to, that would make it viable for something. And then, once you reach that, and you have, you have a stabilization of the taxes, the next question is, is it what you want? Is what it, what it can stabilize at, from a, from a social perspective and a governance perspective, is that what you want on that site? And, you know, and then that, you, some, some may say, well, we don't, we don't want, we don't want to get involved in that, it is what it is, and some would say otherwise. So, I mean, that, that's, that's a, that's a secondary issue in your scenario. It's certainly not going to get better. You're not, you're not going, it's not going to go in the right direction now.
So what I'm trying...
Financially, financially.
But I'm saying, what I'm saying, so if nothing was ever done, and the building just sat there, and deteriorated, and deteriorated, eventually, the tax rate on that, and the valuation is going to collapse, no, it's going to collapse, and then we get less.
It's going to go down, and it's going to go down until it reaches true value.
Exactly, but what I'm, but what I'm trying, and maybe I'm not saying this correctly, I'm just trying to get an if then, saying is, if, you know, everybody wants to know what the pilot breakout is, okay? Municipal goes down, school goes up, nets, nets, probably very, very insignificant. What I'm trying to say is, let's give people also a scenario, if the township didn't do the pilot program, and the property owners decide, they're going to say, well, the value of the property, we want a tax appeal, and it goes back how many years? And they're going to get money back from the township, so that's...
If the value of the property is less, you pick a percentage, whatever it is, it's 25% less, if it's 50% lower, whatever, whatever the value of the property is in your scenario, the taxpayers, the other taxpayers will have to fill in the void that that creates.
That's all I'm asking.
Just like it does now.
Like in Essex Green.
I was just going to say, I was just going to say it was a $4 million appeal.
What I'm, what I'm asking is, because you're hearing one side, I want to give the, the public the understanding is, if we, if we didn't do it, this is the other side. So what's worse? You know what I'm trying to say is, I think that's looking at the whole picture, not just looking at pilot, this, this, and that, what the school's going to get, what the municipal is going to get.
Part of the problems with, part of the problem with that analysis is, I mean, if you're giving me, okay, here's what's going to happen.
Yes.
You're going to have a 50% drop in value, it's going to be used as this, then you can talk about that.
Okay.
But, but if, but, but then you'll, you'll, and it's a debatable issue, okay, is that what, is that what is going to happen? You know, well, no, some might go, well, no, that won't happen, maybe there will be escalation, because I think it could be used as this, some other use, and in my evaluation of, under that use, the property value will go up, and, you know, this was just, it was a better use. You, you, you've already been through all this, I don't know if you want to relitigate that.
No.
But, you know, it is where it's going, it's going where it's going. Clearly, you know, this is going in the right direction in terms of, escalated in terms of the amount of dollars that will come to the township, to the benefit of all the taxpayers.
I've asked my, I've asked my, I've asked my question. And to say that Councilwoman Catalina, what you're saying about Hoboken, it's true, remember, Hoboken up until this year is an abbott district. It's no longer going to be an abbott district, so they're going to hit a huge increase in school expense. So that benefit's going to leave them. So I'm just trying...
That whole corridor is, is entering into an interesting time, because they're reaching years 30 to 35 in their pilots. So a lot of those properties are going to real taxes, which has its own set of challenges. So...
Well, like I said, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to ask my question, that's another scenario, but I can, we're going to miss, thank you.
Council?
If I could just follow up on that, it's, it's very interesting that you raised the question, Councilman Guarino, because in fact, Prism, the redeveloper downtown, did in fact file tax appeals, and did in fact, I think, I can't do the math, but they've carved about $5.5 million worth of the tax base out of those tax appeals that we've agreed to back in August and September, that haven't, I guess, been approved yet. That includes giving back $1 million in payments. So actually, the town and the council majority tried to fight your scenario by putting in redevelopment, and we still lost a huge amount of our tax base, and we're giving back $1 million. So it's not always that. Plus, the building that was there was an operating business, it had multiple businesses there. Some of them have been there for years and years and years. So there's a lot of different elements to the scenario. I just wanted to also talk about the senior citizens' survey data, because I was the one who filed the Open Public Records Act, Act request following the April 24th meeting. At the April 24th meeting, I asked for the, the data, and if you go back and you watch the video, you'll see Ms. DeNova, from all appearances, at least from what I could see, saying that she had the data, but that she didn't understand why anybody would want to take a look at it. And I was explaining to her this whole thing about the tabs, and as Ms. Silvestri had talked about tonight, I didn't, she said she was going to give us the data, she, she didn't give the data, she didn't respond to my email, and so I filed an Oprah request. The finality of the Oprah request is that apparently the town definitively does not have the data that we'd like to look at, but is going to, and I assume already has, asked Montclair State for the data. Supposedly, the person that controlled that was back in, from vacation at the end of last week, and I still haven't heard back, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping to hear back sometime soon on that. But that's sort of the, where things stand now. That's all, Council President.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman?
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, and, and with Ms. Bunker that came here, she, of course, is, you know, she's a researcher for the university, so any requests like that goes up the, obviously, up the chain ladder. She doesn't have the authority to make those kind of releases, just FYI. And when, and I know this firsthand, because when we were going back and back, back and forth with the contract with Montclair State, and trying to, you know, get, this process was a little slow, and that was one of the reasons, because it just goes, she has to bring it back to, to her staff, her administrators, and, you know, just work up the chain, so hopefully, we'll hear back. But Mr. Sayer, if you could follow up on that.
Can I just say, from what I understand, the town attorney wrote a letter.
Yes.
And you got that?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you think I conveyed that, the information in the letter correctly?
My understanding is that they're not going to release the information, and based on what...
Right, that's what, I mean, my understanding is that they, they, I'm not sure, I didn't participate in this, so I'm not sure mechanically what happened and what letters went where, but, but somebody responsible for Montclair State indicated that it was not operable, and they cited the statute, the definition of, of a public document doesn't, it specifically says it's not a public document, it's kind of what was requested, and that they weren't going to provide it. So I, that's all I, that's all I know.
So, first of all, I misspoke. I said the meeting was April 24th, it obviously wasn't, it was March 24th, that was the original meeting where we discussed it. So I, I misspoke, so I apologize for that. I got a letter back from Mr. Trank, the town attorney, dated April, April 19th, and it says, "Finally, as to your request for the cross-tabulations and cleansing data, the township does not possess the data in that format in order to provide a response to your request. Regardless, as an accommodation to you, the township has reached out to Montclair State University, who prepared the survey and compiled the data, to see if they will provide the data in a format responsive to your request. We will contact you once we hear back from the university." It sounds like we have, but I haven't been told.
Well, I assume that, I assume there's going to be a formal response by letter or something, I don't know. I mean, that's, I don't, I was, I mean, I was told that, you know, the person at Montclair State had said, you can't have this, because, you know, it's not a public record, so, and there's a specific exception in the statute, 47A, I don't remember the number, 1.1 or 1-1. And I looked at it, and it appeared to be correct, but I, I assume, you know, when there's an Oprah request, there's a response, as everybody here knows, and it's a formal response, I assume there's going to be...
Well, the response is there, that...
That's what I just read.
Okay, I don't...
We can't provide the information that we don't have. We have nothing responsive to the request.
Okay.
So as far as the township is concerned, as far as my office is concerned with the Oprah, it's, it's closed, because I have nothing responsive to the request.
Okay.
Going further, asking Montclair State, you know, that's a different story, that has nothing to... has nothing to do with...
Councilman, did you send a letter to Montclair State, or...
No, no. See, this all, this all started out because at the March 24 meeting, I requested the data, and from all appearances, Ms. De Nova, who was presenting on the data, said that she had the data, but that she didn't know why anybody would want it, and I said, "But I still want it," and she said, "Okay." Then I didn't hear back from her. So, I assumed that it was on the premises of the township, which is, of course, is subject to the Oprah law, if it existed, as data. But from what everybody's telling me is that the township never took possession of the data, and therefore, under the Oprah law, it's nothing here to give.
Right, I have nothing responsive to.
So then, Mr. Trank wrote me a letter and said they were going to ask Montclair State for the data.
Okay.
So, I'm not, now you're saying that they've already come back and said they're not going to provide...
My understanding is there was a response, but I assume there's going to be a formal response, and I...
I'll speak to Richard. Yeah. And I think the other part of it is the data she was referring to, just like I thought when you first asked for the paper copy, I thought it was the paper copies of the 160 year.
I do not want the paper copies.
I think that's what she assumed.
They were over 800, they were over 800 surveys, so...
153, yep. No, I know.
I just want the spreadsheet, just want the spreadsheet with all the data.
Right. But that's the assumption of time is under at that point, right.
Council President, but just a reminder, the good news is, if you want to go online, there's 75-page-long report, which, you know, was what she was referring to, which is online, and the smaller, what do I do with it, the, well, we have the PDF version, that's online also. I have it here, it's in the hallway here, it's all over town, so it's been strategically, if you picked up a survey, a PDF, it's also, the report should be there as well. So, if not, again, just call 325-4105. Oh, but to your point, Councilman, you know, we signed, you know, we approved the contract, and they did have references to, you know, their, you know, the survey was their property, but they're very, you know, I didn't, I didn't think, I would have thought they would have released it myself, but I guess they don't want to.
So, where is the contract? Can someone send that to me?
Yeah, we've had it, I mean, if you don't have your copy, it's probably on your computer from way back last year, but I guess...
Oh, right. CRE, yeah.
Legal probably has it, because they referred to it to get the information.
Welcome, yeah, let the record reflect.
That's all.
Glad to see you had a safe trip.
Welcome.
Okay. Good. Madam Clerk?
Okay. We're going to review the consent agenda.
Yes.
Approval of meeting, I'm sorry, minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, April 10, 2018.
So moved.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none, reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Anyone have any resolutions that you would like to pull? Do you want to discuss Millennium Strategies, or, you have a question?
I have a question on Resolution H.
H?
112-18.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Lepore is in the area.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Lepore is here.
Hey, Mr. Lepore.
Well, let's go back, are there any other resolutions that you want to?
Um...
No. Okay.
I'd like to pull Agenda Item G, Resolution 111-18, the resolution authorizing one-year agreement with Millennium Strategies.
Okay.
And that's it?
Councilman, Councilwoman, no?
No.
Thank you. Okay, ask your question.
Okay.
Len, could you come up, oh, I'm sorry.
I want to do the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Evening, Mr. Lepore.
Yes.
I just have, you know, a small question and everything else, and the concept of what the engineering agreement will be with this company, to look at the significant firehouses, and what are the categories that they're going to be specifically looking at, and to come to a net result of what actually we're going to be spending on the renovations to the firehouses, in question?
Well, what, just to preface that, a couple of years ago, we hired another architectural firm to do what we'd call a needs assessment of all five of our firehouses. And based on that needs assessment, I prepared the proposal for work at three of the firehouses. That's not to say that the other two don't need anything, but went and looked at Firehouse Three and Four, which are our oldest firehouses, with the exception of Firehouse Five, but that received a complete gut rehab a little over 20 years ago. So, both Firehouse Three and Four are approaching or just over 60 years old. Firehouse Five was indicated they needed, a new roof was in need of that, so it's a relatively new building, I don't want that element of the building to further deteriorate. So, what's included in the package is the various items that were cited, it isn't necessarily all the items, but it's most of the items in Firehouse Three and Four, to tighten up the exterior of the building, new roof, windows pointing up of the brick, want to make sure that the outside of the building is tight, so that when we make the interior improvements and upgrades, again, this isn't a gut rehab, they're relatively modest improvements on the inside, but this way, we don't have that damage by not keeping the elements out. So, that's a lot of the basic work at both Three and Four, and then Five is a roof, which is deteriorating, and we're having some leakage problems in a portion of the building.
Will you be able, after this analysis is done, you'll be able to project exactly what the cost is going to be, and what we're going to have to outline?
Part of what this firm is going to do is they're going to put together cost estimates, and then, I think, within that, if we find we don't have enough money within our budget to make all the improvements, we're going to certainly pick the improvements that are necessary, which would include, again, the roof and the building envelopes, to make sure that those are done, or not do any improvement in a building without doing that.
How long will this analysis take, Mr. Lepore?
Oh, I think, just seeing some of the hours that are budgeted, I would expect maybe mid to late summer, should have that information.
And then, when would the, you know, we go forward in doing the repairs that are within our budget?
Well, I think, once we look at their estimates in the dollars, we'll be able to put the bid packages together.
Okay. Well, the fire administration, will the chief or his deputies have any input into...
They've had input to date, and they'll continue to have input, although, you know, with the exception of maybe some types of choices, I think everybody is pretty much, is in agreement on what we outlined as improvements for these buildings.
But according, basically, according to your comments, is that the key thing is to be tightening up the buildings, so whatever repairs we do internally will not be destroyed from any external lacks in the building?
That's correct, and like I said, picked, I'll say, the oldest of the firehouses, recognizing that Firehouse Five technically is the oldest, but very little improvement work has been done on a major basis to Firehouse Three, which is on Ridgeway Avenue, or Firehouse Four on Pleasant Valley Way, since they opened in 1957, I believe.
Right. How about any asbestos remediation?
We have had asbestos reports prepared, so we know where the asbestos-containing materials are, that was supplied to the architectural firms that responded, or that were requested for a proposal, so they know what some of that additional work will be, and how that has to be remediated. Now, some may not need, some asbestos-containing materials may not have to be remediated at all, they may not be touched, they may not be a factor in the renovation.
Okay. Will there be any need, is there potentially a need to, if a firehouse, when it gets the improvements that will be done and can be done, will there be any need to close any of the firehouses?
That hasn't really been looked at, I don't see that in what we're doing here. It's possible that if we were to make gut rehab, like we did at Firehouse Four, excuse me, Firehouse Five, when it was the first aid squad, we had temporary quarters for the first aid squad, but I think accommodating the first aid squad, which was volunteer, was a little easier than it would be to accommodate displacing the residents of any particular firehouse and the employees there.
Okay. And my last question is, within this whole design concept, will there be an if-then, if they say, "If we do this, this may also happen," like any, you know, in any project, Mr. Lepore, you know, sometimes you start doing something, and something else is found.
I, well, one of my biggest concerns was to try to make improvements that wouldn't have to be undone with the next round of improvements, so...
Good.
I think those are some of the things we tried to look at here, by not trying to piecemeal too many things, only to find that, to do a further improvement, some of that work has to be undone, so trying to go in and make all the improvements needed. But, yes, there are those contingent problems that can develop, especially if you're not sure where certain plumbing or pipe work is.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lepore, appreciate it. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Castellino.
Thank you, Mr. Lepore, for this report. Mr. Gross, a few questions your way. So, the needs assessment was completed, as Mr. Lepore referred to. Is this, is this part of a five-year plan, and this is year one, or we don't have...
These are the, these will be utilizing the funds that were authorized last year, that's what, at this point in time, we have some funds that were previously authorized remaining.
Yes.
So, we've, all in all, we have approximately $700,000 right now, which, obviously, this contract will come out of that, plus any improvements.
And any monies we spent went towards the needs assessment, and any other, was there any other repairs?
No, no, this is net, I'm giving you net numbers.
And would, did we have any other repairs done to our firehouses? Because we started this conversation over a year and a half ago.
We've had, I mean, we've had, the answer is yes, we have had repairs done over the years, since monies were set aside, but at that point in time, if you recall, one of the things that we've looked at is, we don't want to do this, just because, anecdotally, we wanted to get a needs assessment done of all the firehouses, so we could do it in a methodical way, and this is the first, the first chunk of that.
So, so it is, we are in summer months, which is great timing for roofs and whatnot, and one of my questions, which you answered from Councilman Guarino, was if we have to close any of our houses while you do the roofs, I mean, do the work. Any way to expedite it? I mean, I know this is a long time coming, and, but it just seems, you know, this has been over a year and a half since we even discussed this, I just feel it takes forever to get things done.
Have, I'll discuss it with the architect, it's an architect we worked with before. There's probably, based on his estimate, about 450 hours of work in this, and it doesn't mean that it all goes consecutively, but, you know, that's several man weeks, so...
Is there any way he complete, so let me ask you this now, so, is there any way that he completes one firehouse, then you could, we could start allocating funds to start that work, or you're going to wait to get all?
Probably not.
Or so you're going to wait to get all of them?
No, 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 this, in other words, once we get this, well, once we get the report back from the architect of what the costs are, we then, from there, will pick the projects to go, and we should do them all together, because there's cost savings.
Yeah, cost savings, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. However you could expedite it, that would be great.
But on a favorable note...
We're here.
Now, the RFP did include assessing and analyzing and replacing the HVAC units at Firehouse Number Five, which has, since the RFP was issued, was done under another energy-saving program, so the architect can reduce the fee by about $3,800, so...
I just don't want us to get in a situation where we get everything back, and then, you know, we're having this conversation in September, while the weather's turning, you know, we can't get X, Y, or Z done, so, and then, it becomes a year again, you know, it becomes a year before we get the project done. So, thank you, Mr. Lepore.
Councilman Chirillo.
Thank you, Council President. Mike, what is the budget for this work, again?
Well, the total work is probably north of, well, certainly, north of, north of the money that we have.
That's what I saw.
So, you know, we have an initial estimate from the needs assessment, which, you know, were not necessarily tremendously accurate, there, you know, it's more of giving you an idea of the terrain, rather than the actual middle of the dartboard. So, it's, we, there's substantially more work to be done there than we have funds for. Having said that, last year, in the 2017 capital budget, the council approved a half a million dollars for this, and then, again, there's funds that we had left over from previous, which, so brings us up to around $700,000, and hate to use the analogy, but it's like buying gas, we're going to get $700,000 for it, and at this game.
Yeah, just looking at the list, I don't think that's sufficient funds, and I just want to confirm that. So, the, as far as the professional services that we would approve tonight, is that based on a flat fee or an hourly rate?
It's a lump sum not to exceed fee.
But what if now all the work is addressed? What would happen in that situation?
Then we'd bill percentage less for that.
Okay.
But, but right now, I mean, the instructions to, the architect would be to proceed with this work.
Sure.
Sooner or later, we're going to have to do this as part of the firehouses, whether we decide now to do roofs and exterior work, because that fits our budget, or we decide just to go with all the improvements at one firehouse, not saying which way we should go, but, you know, that's, that's how, you know, this could be approached with this, but he would still need, we'd still want him to develop the other plans and bid documents for the next year.
Correct. So, so what we're saying is that we may compensate the vendor on an hourly rate, in case only 75% of the work is addressed, or we're entering into a contract, a long-term contract, where they will be under, you know, they would be operating under the contract until all the work is addressed?
No, I don't think that's exactly what's going on. The work that is being authorized by this resolution does not include all the work on all the buildings, number one. It includes a scope of work which is substantial, which may not, we may not have the funds for now. Our intention is to have him complete that, because at some point in time, let's assume that it does not finish, and we can do X percent, we're going to have the other plans and specifications basically on the shelf for when the funding comes available, so when the funding does become available, there will not be this league time, we'll have, they are going to be ready to go, so we'll be able to move much more quickly, because the work will have already been done.
Right, but the compensation includes the project management, doesn't it? How do you account for that?
Well, if he doesn't...
If he doesn't project manage, that will not be spent, until he does.
So, that's, my question, is it enumerated on an hourly basis, in case we don't get to the project management component of the bid process? I'm sorry, I don't want to make this complicated.
Well, and again, I don't remember specifically, but it's either, it's either percentage by hourly rate, or by percentage of project.
I did see hourly rates on the proposal, so perhaps that's the way it'll be enumerated until the cap is reached, I don't know. I just know, I, what struck me was the amount of work, and I don't think that all that work will be covered by that budget.
So, for example, Councilman Cirillo, if there's a contract management or administration fee, but yet, you're concerned that if we don't do all the work as itemized in the proposal, because there's a budgetary constraint, then his management fee should, for example, be adjusted, or all his fees should be adjusted.
So, what do we use to adjust that management fee, is it an hourly rate?
I can go over with him to discuss billing us on an hourly, but not to exceed, if that's...
That's where I was headed, correct. Yeah, because a flat fee doesn't make sense, because we may not cover all the work, and just the design phase, right? We're not going to be...
Well, a flat fee would, a flat fee would have to include all the services, and if you did, if we did not utilize all the services, we either, some formula... did not utilize all the services, we either, some formula, whether it be on an hourly basis, or a percentage of the work, or that the work will be, when we do the work, that that's already, that that will be then paid at some point in time. Whether it's done on an hourly or a percentage, it makes, doesn't really matter, and can be, as it evolves, and we see what the actual outcome is going to be.
Time down.
Yeah.
But we certainly would not pay 100% for services. We will never pay for services that are not provided. That we will never do. We cannot. We'll not.
So, that's just, yeah, we'll just find the formula to...
We find a way, yes.
Yeah, we have a, we find a cutoff point. And if we average seven to eight percent for A and E services, right, that means that the total amount of work, the total amount of funding that we would need for this entire scope is probably about $1.6 million in the aggregate? If $111,000 is about the eight percent rate?
Yeah, I think that's going to be high. I think, you know, this is, you know, work that's, you know, rehab and renovation work, so I think you start to find the fees getting, you know, that that doesn't work. You may have a slightly higher fee structure for that type of work. You know, as I indicated in my letter, you know, a number of firms that responded to our request for qualifications said they just weren't interested. Not that they weren't capable, but I think they saw that this was a job that was not going to be very necessarily lucrative for them to do. And I think also, the economy is doing quite well for building service and architectural, so this was not necessarily something that they were interested in. Which is unfortunate, because, you know, then it makes it a little difficult for a person.
I think the pricing is fair, yeah. Pricing is fair, absolutely. You had, what, three firms that didn't respond?
Three didn't respond. Two indicated they just wouldn't respond. They thought that they would be difficult for them to be competitive on this type of work, but yet, they didn't know who their competition was. So, they just didn't respond. And one, I just didn't hear from at all.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Councilman.
I think perhaps Councilwoman Kesselina and I have raised this issue before, and I, if I have, I, or at least danced around it. It seems to me that having the firehouses in really good condition is really important, if we consider public safety to be important. So, I'm trying to get my hands around how we, head around how we decided that we were only going to do three of the, three of the houses, as opposed to maybe all of the facilities?
I could certainly do all the facilities. I think what I put even in this is going to be a bit of a stretch for the dollars that are available. But, like I said, what I did is I went back to some of our oldest facilities, which are Firehouse Three and Four, wanted to concentrate on them. Again, that's not to say there's nothing wrong with Firehouse Two, or Fire Headquarters. And then also just said, my gosh, we have our newest facility, even though the building envelope itself is the oldest, at Firehouse Five, where roof is seeing its age. Let me make sure, before we start to lose the inside of that building, to make sure that that roof got upgraded. So, you know, if there was, as John Gross said, you know, a couple of million dollars here, this proposal would look different. My request would be completely different. So, it's where I thought we needed to pay some immediate attention.
Okay. So, I can understand. What you seem to be saying in a single word is prioritization.
It's prioritization, but it was also even somewhat, even prioritization within certain buildings.
Okay. So, here's, here's what I'm trying to figure out. Prioritization means we compare this to whatever, what else, other weekend we could be doing. It sounds like you, that was part of your thinking, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, I'm really anxious to see our draft capital budget for 2018, so that we can perhaps give some thought to whether that's the prioritization that we want to, we want to agree with. So, I don't know. When are we going to get the draft capital budget for 2018?
I expect to sit with the mayor this week to come up with the final, final draft of that, and send it off to legal counsel. Most likely, you will see it, not the, not the first meeting, maybe the second meeting.
Okay. Because I personally, if I, if we need to fix the firehouses, I would rather do that than spend, you know, $190,000 for the skate park, or the $550,000 for the 20-space parking lot over at Eagle Rock Avenue. But, we can't do that until we have the whole budget. So, I won't belabor the point, so thank you. I'd like to get it, you know, sooner, as soon as possible, before the next meeting, because I think it's, is the next meeting the public hearing on the budget?
On the municipal budget. It will not, we will not have that to you for that meeting. It will be for the introduction, the subsequent meeting, and then adoption of probably the first meeting in June.
Okay.
You're not implying to hold this up until we get that capital, are you?
No, I just would like, I would like to have the budget...
Well, of course, to compare, but I thought you were implying to hold this up.
No, no, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think we need to do that to agree with the budget.
Okay.
Just one more question. In the proposal from the firm, Herps, that you're recommending that we approve, there was an extensive section about asbestos, in which they went to a subcontractor who actually priced out asbestos treatment for the three facilities.
Two.
I'm sorry, for two. Apologize. Is that, is that a fixed amount of work, a fixed dollar amount and a fixed work? Or, because what you were just saying is, it depends on whether you need to pull...
It's going to vary, and I think that's the one part of the proposal, that that's his estimate, that that can change. I think he has a pretty good handle on what his professional services would be, or what an engineer's professional services would be for mechanical and electrical. The asbestos is going to be a little bit more, still a bit more of an unknown, as far as the monitoring of any remediation.
Okay, so the, so the numbers that they give for the asbestos portion are, again, variable, as Councilman Serrano was pointing out?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
I can tell you from experience that that is a wide open, you know...
Yeah, you don't know until you see it.
That's the classic, you don't know what's behind the walls.
Because you don't know, you don't know whether you take it out, sure, okay.
Or, more importantly, you don't know sometimes what's actually in the walls themselves, what's been made up of. And, because there was periods of time when, for instance, and ours are, I think were built after that, but the period of time, older firehouses in particular, with certain types of plaster, where the plaster itself was made with asbestos. And that's pretty...
Fairly confident we're not going to have any surprises with what contains asbestos, because we've, we've gone through that at the buildings. So, it's just how, if it needs to be removed or remediated, and how you seal that area off when you do it.
Okay, thank, that's all I had, Council President. Thank you, Mr. LaPore.
So, then, over the years, we, we have sat through numerous meetings, looking at solar panels on our municipal buildings, our schools, and our libraries. And we discovered that only portions are structurally sound. And now, when I see new roofs on these buildings, and the library has grant for solar, this is something we can revisit.
Can revisit? I can talk to our grant writer about it.
Yep. Great. So, we did see significant savings with direct install, so other municipalities are doing it on their municipal buildings. We can revisit that.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clear.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, any...
We were asking questions about Resolution 11218. We've already approved that as part of the consent. Going on to 111.
Right, 11118, Resolution Authorizing a One-Year Agreement with Millennium Strategies from May 1st, 2018 through April 30th, 2019, for the grant writer at a rate of $3,000 per month, worth $36,000, and Councilman Kupovia pulled this.
Yes. I just pulled this because there were three people that, there were three entities that...
Submitted.
I'm sorry, I'm really, I'm really tired. Yeah, submitted proposals for this. Millennium Strategies, which is the incumbent, was the highest, the highest in their bid. And if you go back to 2016, when they were originally chosen, there were also three bids, and they were the, they were not the lowest bid back then, but they got the contract. And I just asked for their annual reports that are required in the contract. I got the one for the most recent period, but I don't believe I got one for the earlier period. But, I just wanted some sort of explanation as to why, again, we would pick, in this case, the highest price of the three, the three bidders.
I can address that, Council. Number one, you're right, Millennium Strategies is our current vendor, and I can only tell you that we've been extremely happy with their performance, far, far beyond my personal expectation. I'll go as far as to say that they probably, not probably, they are performing the best of any firm I've been associated with in my entire career in this area. So, I feel very strongly that they're doing a terrific, terrific job. So, this is a, this is a unique situation. This particular resolution that we present to you this evening actually does not require council approval. It is presented to you because this is a particular contract that the council has, has dealt with in the past, and has particular interest in it. So, therefore, rather than go ahead and make, make a selection without the council, we've submitted that to you tonight, and we certainly intend to go by whatever determination the council makes on that. Having said that, we, the township can do this procurement by, on a quote basis. And based on a quote basis, you're required to consider cost and other relevant factors. So, other relevant factors certainly could be experience, certainly could be other factors. One of the other factors that you, we also will, should, will and should consider, is the cost of implementation. Changing firms of this nature requires the time and expertise of all of our department heads and many, many staff, in order to bring a new company onboard, which we did when we brought in Millennium. And without a doubt, this is probably talking two to three hours with each department head, as well as other staff. You can do a pretty quick back of the napkin on that. And the cost of productivity of redoing this again this year, what we did, what we did a couple of years ago, would cost us, in terms of productivity, somewhere in the area between four and $6,000. So, in addition to experience, I would submit to you that this ultimately, going with a different vendor this evening, would ultimately cost more money to the township taxpayers in terms of lost productivity for staff, you know, in order, in order to bring them up to speed. Because, one, it's important to understand that, that a company that's going to come in, whatever their experience and background is, needs to understand the township of West Orange, and what our individual department needs are, what are, you know, what have we been successful at, what are we doing already, and to learn our, to some extent, our operations, in order to be knowledgeable enough to be able to go out and bang on the right doors to get us the right grants. So, we highly recommend Millennium Strategies, Millennium Strategies, excuse me, and we believe that ultimately, they would be the least expensive and the best choice for the township.
Well, I wanted to just elaborate on what John just said, because the competitive grants that were awarded, and this is just in a nine-month period so far, tally up to $749,000. Non-competitive grants that have been awarded total $847,000. So, the point that you were just making about the grants that are pending, many of which I worked on, they total $2,203,000. So, to transfer pending grants to someone else, I would find that difficult, and they're just so reasonable and accessible to work with, so...
I agree completely. And I just point out that our grants, for instance, one of the things, when we, when I do my budget presentation, you're going to see is the increase in grants this year, which are up about, well over 300%. A good portion of that is directly related to Millennium Strategies. So, we're seeing, definitely seeing more activity than we've seen before with, previously. And, again, we stand behind the recommendation.
John, to that, oh, sorry, but to that point, also, that we have people here that call or send emails, and just to make sure that we don't miss a grant, I immediately forward it over to them. It's already, have always been on their radar. It may not be awarded their grant, but they're always willing to look, and I'm always pleased to see that they're constantly searching, and receptive to anything that we send their way to, on top of what they already have.
You know, and from my perspective, just to follow up on what John said, I've been in this business a long time, and I've never worked with a grant writers as, as good as Millennium. And I say that not just because of the money that we get, and the amount of grants that they produce for us, but how they work with our employees. It is amazing to me that the work that they do with our employees, and I know you've experienced this, and you've experienced this, because you guys have come to them with grants, and they're always ready, willing, able to sit down and talk during the day, at night, whenever it is, and get things going, even if it's something that has to be filed within two weeks. They're working very, very diligently with all our employees.
Even if it is a million dollars, yeah.
And I recommend that we definitely hire them. But, that's up to you guys.
I agree.
So, how do, does Millennium compare with the other two, two bidders?
What do you mean, how do they compare?
We don't have any personal experience.
We don't have any personal experience.
Right, I understand that.
So, it's very difficult to say that. I could just tell you...
One of them, actually, if you read what it says, is they only do, what was it?
Police and Fire.
Yeah, they just do police and fire grants. So, I mean, I wouldn't even deal with that company. Second company does some work with municipalities. But if you look at Millennium's background, and how many municipalities and governmental agencies that they work with, it's just better than both of these companies, both of the other two people who submitted that.
I find that they outperform anybody that I've ever worked with, and some that, you know, that I selected, you know, in the past. I feel very strongly about this, that they're the right, the right choice for the township.
Well, and the difference between the one consulting firm and this, there's only a $304 difference, going with someone new, considering, again, $2 million worth of pending applications. I wouldn't quibble over $304 with that amount of money out there pending. And how many, you know, that's just the pending. On the last page, there's a page and a half of how many grants have just been presented to us that will be coming due. So, a lot, a lot of time and effort.
They're more than responsive.
Yes.
Council President.
Again, though, I got to emphasize their service. The service is phenomenal, the best I've ever seen from anyone.
I agree. Councilwoman?
Just to piggyback on all the positive comments, you know, you walk into some, I'll give you a perfect example with the senior citizen study. She, and I could see them raising their fee from their original application from two years ago, because of the time they actually spend with the, with the township. You know, she came in to a meeting, then we gave her the results, and just working with the health department, and trying, like this Partners in Health grant that we're going to be applying for, we could go in so many different directions. She just gets everyone focused, everyone on point, and before the end of the meeting, where, you know, I was a little apprehensive of where we're going with this, you know, she has us off and running in a direction, and everybody bringing what they, they need to her, and she keeps everybody on a timeline. Now, this just wasn't with Catherine, this was with their prior rep, Denise Rodriguez. So, to, you know, when Denise had left the firm to move closer to her home, and we were getting a new person, the first, first thing I did was call Council, Council President, to say, "Oh, no, are we gonna, you know, hope we have the same service?" And we really do. I mean, that's just, that's just their policy, to treat us, hold us with kick gloves. And also, the relationships they're making with our school district as well. Because a lot of these grants, we need the partnerships with the schools, and they've been very given, and receiving a lot of compliments on their time and effort they're spending getting information, especially when you're looking for that schools grant, safe schools.
Which is very difficult, very competitive.
The thing about grant writers is that they're historically... Thing about grant writers is they're, historically, it's all about the individual. And so when, so when we, when we lost Denise, I was like, ooh, you know, like she was really so good.
I went to a panic.
Catherine's great.
She moved away or to another opportunity. And, and then Catherine didn't skip a beat. Now, the fact that, that this, this, Millennium, this company has this high of a talent of multiple people, it's just very impressive. It's very impressive.
Well, to Michelle's point, Michelle sat in on the first meeting of our Bloomberg Art Grant, and again, well over a million dollars. Ideas were flying all around the room.
It was all over the place.
It was exciting because, you know, we had never seen anything like this or, or looked at that type of funding. And they just have that knack. It's, it's not condescending in any way, it just pulls everyone's ideas together, gets you focused on answering the questions, and, and we got it done in a very, thanks to Karen taking minutes for us and got it done in a very short amount of time. So, well done to that team.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 111-18?
Some of...
Second. Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
I have to understand.
Oh, okay. Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kupovia?
Yes.
And Council President McCartney?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to work.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
There is a new creative place made...
Ordinances on second and final reading. Ordinance 2540-18, calendar year 2017, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriate, appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Is there a motion to...
Some of...
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kupovia?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any comments or questions on this ordinance? Seeing none, we had the discussion on first reading as we do every year? Yes, did you have a question?
No, no, no.
No.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Seeing none?
Well, we have a public hearing, that's all.
She asked.
Oh, you, oh, you were asking? Okay, I'm sorry.
I just did. And we discussed it on first reading.
Right. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt on second and final?
Some of...
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Count, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kupovia?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
And... Oh, okay. All right. No, well, the mayor has to sign first. 2541-18, ordinances on first reading. An ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing employee status as a township employee and under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some of...
Second. I think that was Victor's.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kupovia?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Any discussion on first reading?
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion?
I don't have any, but I would appreciate John giving us a breakdown on pilot with graphics and visuals. That for our next meeting.
And then...
Yes, Councilman.
So when we get the capital budget, you'll get, you'll give us a list of what we did get accomplished last year, and then the... Check. Love checking boxes.
We have no ABC hearing, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Am I opposed? The meeting is adjourned.